Good evening. I call this meeting of the Dallas Planning Commission, second attempt for November. At six oh one. Would you please read the call roll? The roll call, please, Benjamin?
Commissioner Swanson let staff know that he wouldn't be here. Commissioner Bro.
Here.
Commissioner Koash.
Here.
Commissioner Banford. Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
Commissioner Spofford.
Here.
And we are expecting Commissioner Newell anytime.
Okay, sounds good. Um, let's go for the approval of the minutes. Does anyone have any comments or corrections on the minutes from our September 12th meeting? Hearing none. Would someone move to approve the minutes as written, please?
Some moved.
Second? Someone second? I didn't mean to second. Thank you, John. All right. All in favor of approving the minutes as written, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. All right, this is the time for public comment. An opportunity for citizens to speak to items not on the agenda. For three minutes. Looks like we have one citizen. Did you want to say anything that wasn't on the agenda? All right, is there anyone in the queue?
One in the queue.
All right, we're good to go with that then. All right, at this time, I will just read the script first, or do I do I start it first? I guess I read the script. All right. Uh, this is for legislative amendment twenty four zero one. Land use development code updates to comply with Senate Bill fifteen seventy three. Fifteen thirty seven. All right, let me fix that. Good thing you're here. All right, um, this is an official public hearing before the Dallas Planning Commission. I now declare this public hearing open at six oh two, or six oh three, let's call it. Uh, as the application is subject to land use proceedings recognized by state law, I will read the following statement. The failure to raise an issue with sufficient detail to afford the commission and the parties inadequate opportunity to respond to each issue precludes appeal to the state land use board of appeals based on that issue. Please direct all testimony to the record and the applicable criteria you believe applies to the decision. Applicable approval criteria are found in the staff report. Do we have a staff report? I assume, yeah, we do. Okay. At this time, I will ask if any member of the planning commission has a conflict of interest, site visit, not sure that applies, or ex parte contact to declare. I don't think we know anything about it, really. Okay, we are good to go. No hands raised. All right, this chair will, uh, this hearing will be conducted in the following manner. We will begin with a staff report, followed by questions of staff. Thereafter, we will hear from the applicant, including members of the applicant team, for a total of fifteen minutes. This may be followed by questions from the commission. Thereafter, we will hear from all others interested in presenting testimony on this item before the commission. Each person will be provided five minutes to testify. We will then provide the applicant with five minutes for rebuttal. After we have heard all testimony, I will close the hearing and ask the commission to deliberate, and then ask if there is a motion for recommendation in response to this proposal. At this time, we'll start with the staff report. May we have the staff report, please?
Sure, why not? Um, yes, so, uh, I don't have a PowerPoint for this one, uh, because there's no, like, maps or pretty graphics to show off, so I'm just gonna be going off of the printed staff report that is in your packet. Um, essentially, Oregon Senate Bill fifteen thirty seven was recently passed, and it was Christmas tree bill for some housing folks, um, and had a whole bunch of provisions that we are still, um, kinda, uh, working through grappling with, trying to figure out how we're going to implement. Um, one of the ones that is more pressing, um, because it does require us to amend our code, uh, relates to, uh, the processing of certain, uh, land use application types as, uh, limited land use decisions, uh, which is a defined, uh, legal term. Uh, there are already certain decisions that were, uh, limited land use decisions, and this, uh, Senate bill has expanded that definition to include uh, partitions, subdivisions, replats, property line adjustments, uh, site plan reviews, uh, extensions, alterations, or expansions of non-conforming uses, um, as well as adjustments to certain land use regulations. So, um, the packet that we have here for you, um, which is on pages seven through, uh, what is that, pages seven through? Yes, of the, uh, the packet there, um, is the, the amended code. Um, the very first section there under official action is sort of a code cleanup to clarify that uh, references to the planning official can also mean, uh, the planning official is designee. Um, but everything else here really addresses, um, the, uh, the procedure types used for processing those limited land use decisions. Um, we've added a new, uh, column to the table, uh, summarizing land use approval processes, um, and have amended some of the approval type numbers, um, in response to this, uh, this code, uh, this, this Senate bill. Um, the, the key takeaway from this is that, uh, a fair number of things that used to come to, uh, planning commission for approval um, are now going to be processed as a type two, uh, staff level decision with a, a public comment period, so, um, still providing public notice of a lot of these decisions, but there will be, um, a lot fewer things coming towards the, the commission itself for review. Uh, particularly, um, uh, of note is the subdivisions. Um, that's, uh, I think, one of the, the big changes that we'll have, um, that you would, uh, you know, recognize as being, being different. So, um, but yeah, so that's, uh, kinda what we've got for you in terms of the, the code amendment. Um, we also then amend, uh, parts that talk about the, the type two procedure, um, specifically with regards to, um, appeals. Um, and so that is kind of the, the remainder of your, your page there, but, um.
So that was required by the change in regulation?
Right, yes, uh, because we, we are now going to be processing certain, uh, tasks or certain, uh, applications as uh, that limited land use decision, um, and the appeal process specified under state law for some of those is different than what we had been doing previously, and so, um, the amendment kind of addresses that, that discrepancy, so.
Yeah, if I can, uh, yeah. Yeah, this is gonna be a big, big change for the planning commission. It's a big change for the city. Um, you know, we, we have a process in place now, let's say, with a, uh, uh, so, a type two, let's say, a partition, um, appeal would come to the planning commission, and from planning commission, it would go to city council and for the final decision. Um, the governor and legislature, of course, are, um, intent on speeding the process for housing and housing-related, uh, actions. And so, uh, what Senate Bill fifteen thirty seven does is it says for this type, these types of, uh, limited land use decisions, and they're what you see in the, in the amendment, um, we're not gonna start with the hearing. Staff is just gonna make the decision. And then, if the statute doesn't even require opportunity for appeal. Um, some cities have, have adopted this, so the staff decision is the final, and any appeal goes to Luba.
Oh.
We wanted to, I should say, we, staff wanted to involve the city's planning commission and elected officials, still in some role. Uh, and so, built into this, and, and it's permitted under Senate Bill fifteen thirty seven, uh, built in a, an appeal process still within the city, so Chase makes a decision on a limited land use decision. Somebody wants to appeal it, and it's appealed to what's designated here on pages, uh, two and three of the amendment as, uh, the local appeal body, just one, one appeal. That's all, because there's not time for two appeals after the staff decision, because all these actions have to be finished within the hundred and twenty days of a, of a land use decision, so you will be seeing fewer hearings, um, because only the ones that get appealed from the staff level will be coming up for a hearing at all.
So to meet the, the requirements of the regulation, we have to speed up the process, but we have decided as a body to at least put it into city council, so not everything has to go to Luba.
Yeah.
So there's some, some.
Still some citizen engagement.
Okay.
Yeah, but less. Uh, and it's intentional.
To meet the intention of the law.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Because we have to get it all done within a hundred and twenty days from the date the application is filed. Um, and so, so that's it. Um, and, uh, this provision for a limited landage decision has been in the books for several years. Uh, not many cities have actually implemented it. Uh, in this last uh, spring, the legislature passed Senate Bill fifteen thirty seven that basically says, you will do it by the end of the year, and if you don't, um, state law will override your city code, and you'll have to comply just directly with state law.
Because previously, it was, uh, basically optional, the way that the, the law was written.
And nobody, not many people were, not many cities were doing it.
Right. So now it's not optional anymore.
So they all opted out, and so they made it mandatory.
Well, and another, uh, point as well, uh, there was a, a House bill several years ago that created an expedited process for affordable housing of a hundred days. Um, and that's even harder to try and have a whole process with if you have multiple appeals, so, um, yeah.
Questions were okay?
Well, wasn't that law put in place because they were having trouble in Portland and Multnomah County particularly, getting any affordable housing through because their process was so long?
I, I can't say that it was the metro area specifically. Um, there's a, a number of communities around the state that have some reputation, uh, in that regard, so.
I know of one, yes.
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 Were you finished with the staff report?
Yes.
Okay, then I'll open it to questions from the planning commission. You had a question, John?
We take the body of what's come before us for the last year, looking forward to the issue. Is it half that, or two quarters of it, or ten percent?
I don't know. It's a good, good question. It would only be, Chase will make the decision always, uh, in these, um, uh, these, these limited landage decisions, and it will only be the ones that get appealed, and so we don't have any track record to know how many will be appealed to the planning commission or the city council. Do you have a sense, Chase?
So knowing how many of them get appealed is gonna be a, a difficult, uh, thing to predict. I think that we've had probably three appeals in the whole, you know, eight, nine years that I've, I've been working here, so.
And a commission to city council, yeah.
Right, so there's not been a lot of appeals. Um, there are still some things that will come to planning commission, so, um, annexations, uh, tho- those kinds of things, uh, conditional use permits would, would still come to planning commission, um, the, uh.
Development code text amendments.
Right, uh, so, uh, zoning, uh, changes, um, uh, variances, class B variances. Um, the, the, the major variances, I should say. There's, one of the things this new bill, uh, imposed was a requirement for cities to um, approve of certain minor variances, just kind of because the developer wants them. Um, and so, uh, those will be a whole different thing, but for the major variances, those would still come to, to planning commission, so there are, there are some things that would, would still come before you, but a lot fewer, so yeah, I think probably eighty percent of the things that you've been seeing, uh, uh, recently, you, you wouldn't be seeing as much of anymore.
Andy, the, the tie-in that I make to this is, uh, what we discussed in our non-meeting last time. I see there's a tremendous opportunity for this planning commission to change its focus. I don't want to get off on a tangent here, but to, to change its focus from what to me has been largely an administrative process to a broader, more outreach process defined as best practices in other planning commissions. So that's the initiative we, I, I'm trying to get going here, that we look, we open these dark drapes and see what's going on in the world around us and as best practices, apart from meetings. I totally set meetings apart. We don't touch on those. What else are planning commission is doing in terms of best practices that we should look at? I think it's a fab- fabulous opportunity for us to do that.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody else have any questions? I had two questions. Um, first one is, you mentioned variances that are basically pro forma approved. Do they still require the fee in the application process?
Um, I would have to review the, the statute on that. Um, I don't believe it goes through our usual process. Um, and I don't think it's subject to the usual fee, no.
So variances don't get notified to the neighbors or anything else?
Yeah, so the, the minor variance, and again, I don't have that particular section of the bill in front of me, and it was a very long bill. Um, but yeah, I don't believe there was any, uh, notice requirement specifically of those, uh, those, uh, adjustment, minor variance requests. Um, it was just, uh, the, the standard for the, the application type. Um, there are certain approval criteria to be eligible to request the variance. Um, but if you are eligible to request the variance, it, it's basically guaranteed that you get it, is kind of the way that it's written.
Specifics, for examples?
Yeah, so.
So we can kind of have a feel?
Right, yeah, so, um, the, the, the approval, the criteria to be eligible really ties to, um, uh, either, you know, the, the variance will make, uh, the housing more affordable. Um, the variance will, uh, allow housing to be built that otherwise wouldn't be allowed to be built, like, those are the kind of things that it takes to really be eligible, um, and the allowed, uh, list of potential variances, um, includes, uh, parking minimums, uh, setbacks, uh, lot size standards, uh, up to a certain percentage of the standards. Um, architectural, uh, building design, uh, reform materials, um, uh, densities, like, there's a whole host of things that.
Stuff you could do on the island there, empty family wouldn't even happen anymore.
Yeah, basically. Yeah.
You require to prove it, or again, just automatically be approved, okay?
Yeah, I mean, they, they would have to ask for it, um, and they'd have to show that, uh, they, they meet the applicable provisions of the statute, but yeah, if they do, it's, it's from what I can tell, basically automatic, so.
So one more question. Did somebody have a comment about that?
Go ahead.
I have one more question, my last question, um, regarding the text. On page four, under type two procedures B, it says, um, B one C, any neighborhood or community organization recognized by the governing body and whose boundaries include the site um, are to get, uh, notice of the application. That's on, okay, where that is?
Yes, um, so, uh, that particular section, uh, we are amending that so that the language that we're using is consistent uh, with the language used by the state, so.
Now, when we go to page six, under notice of decision D, um, the portion that used to be C is struck out, meaning they don't get a notice of the decision.
Right, they don't get a notice of decision, they get a notice of the application.
If they participate, if they submit comments, then they'll get notice of the decision.
Just as a, being a member of the proceedings.
Okay.
Um, but we, the, the purpose of it is to provide notice in advance of making the decision, that way they have the opportunity to weigh in on.
Yeah, so if they submit a comment or somebody from, then they fall under B at the top, top of that page, any person who submitted.
Okay, I was just curious if that was, okay.
We, we don't, we don't currently have any organizations which would qualify under that provision, but better to, uh, have the language be correct in case we do end up with that.
Now, aren't, aren't there still notice requirements based on proximity to?
Oh, yes, yes.
So those still apply?
Yes.
So if, even if somebody is close, if they didn't say anything, they don't get a notice that it got approved or whatever? Okay, I just wanted to make sure we didn't have something missing, and it just seemed curious to me. Um, all right.
So I have one follow-up. Um, we were talking about the Senate bill and what's required. Is it required for all housing types? Um, I, I'm sorry, I haven't read it. Or is it just for affordable housing, commercial, multifamily?
Um, so it's, it's essentially all housing. Um, there are some additional, uh, provisions that come into play when you have uh, mixed use kind of housing, um, except under certain circumstances, so it gets a little complicated. Um, but, uh, yeah, it's, it's very broad, the way that it's written, um.
The, yeah, the statute just uses the term subdivision, um, so even, even an industrial subdivision.
And, yeah, okay, it applies because it's a subdivision, not because it's got it. Okay, that helps, thank you.
Tom, what's the effective date of all this?
Uh, we are required to have it in place by January, by December thirty first. I think we'll miss that by
Yeah, I think we're gonna end up being effective on, like, the ninth.
Well, let's see, the city council will have the hearing on, that's right, the city council meeting is delayed next month. It would normally be the second, but they're gonna be meeting on the ninth instead. They'll adopt this amendment on the ninth, and it will go into effect thirty days later, which would be January eighth.
Um, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll have a period of time there where if somebody comes in with an application, we'll have to default just to the state statute. Um, for five or six days, but you got the holiday in there and a weekend, and so it's unlikely there's gonna be any.
There is no basis on which we could not recommend this to the city.
No, there's not.
So it's, well, we could not recommend it, and then we would be just subject to state law.
That's right, yeah, at least this way we get to shake it a little bit, yeah.
Okay, all right. Did anyone else have any more questions or comments? In that case, I will, um, hear from the applicant. Do we have an applicant?
Uh, not in this case. The city is the applicant.
I'm just following my script.
I understand, yeah.
All right. Okay, we don't have any applicant, we don't have any questions of the non-applicant?
Seems like we lost our one person who was.
We lost our one person?
That's Troy, if he wants to come up.
Um, trying to get down to any final comments from the staff or city attorney?
It's like someone's on the TV, though, on the, in the meeting, electronic.
Oh, yeah, probably our next presentation.
Somebody on the?
That's our consultant for the next.
Okay, that's for the next presentation.
We have no one else in the queue.
All right, so anybody, anybody have any more comments or questions? In that case, I will close the hearing at seven, or excuse me, six twenty-three. And, uh, ba-ba-ba. And we don't really, anybody need to deliberate? Anybody have any questions, comments? They want to say anything? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the legislative amendment, uh, as written in the staff report.
Recommend the city council approve of the proposed text amendments to the Dallas Development Code drafted in Exhibit Eight.
Much, that was very well put. Do I have a second?
Jesus.
And I think I said approve, and we don't do that, so.
Recommend approval.
For catching that up. You approve? All right, thank you very much. All right, uh, if there's no discussion, which I don't imagine there would be, but speak now forever, hold your peace. We will now vote on the motion. Uh, the motion is to approve, uh, the, is to recommend the legislative amendment to city council. Uh, if we could have, well, the way things are going, I think a voice vote would be just fine. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, none. The motion is carried and will be recommended to city council for approval. Um, commission's recommendation tonight will be forwarded to city council for their consideration at upcoming meeting. Notice the public hearing before the city council will be sent to all participants of record, which there weren't any. Done with that little script. All right, we are now ready to um, deal with the lock rail node presentation. Do we have the consultant on board, and are they ready? This is an.
Good evening, Chair. How are you this evening?
Good evening.
We're doing good, thank you.
Good, good, great. Uh, in which, I, it used to be Chair Swanson, who's, uh, who's the chair now? I'm sorry, I didn't catch the beginning of the meeting.
John, John couldn't be here. My name is Andy Gro.
Oh, okay, thank you, Chair Gro. As president, you know, a pleasure to be here. I was, I was worried we might not have another quorum again after a couple months here, so glad to, uh, be here. Can you see this on the screen up there?
We're seeing the screen, but we're also seeing your slides to the left, and we're having some interesting echoing going on. You were.
How's, how's that? Is that better?
A little bit, yeah, sure. We can deal with that.
Okay, all right.
Okay, we'll just keep the volume down. Go ahead. We're getting used to a new system.
All right, well, Ben and Chase, thank you for, uh, having us here tonight. Um, it's, it's quite exciting. Uh, this is just, again, an informational. Um, it was, it was kind of exciting. I was hoping we were gonna be here, uh, have the meeting, uh, last week. It would have been a year uh, that we were in front of the planning commission last time to, you know, adopt the concept plan here for the lock rail node, but, um, you, you have the staff report. We've also sent out all this paperwork to you folks, uh. Oh, I think you've had it for about a, a month and a half now, two months now since October, but I'm gonna go over a high-level, uh, purview tonight here, just some introductions, talk about, you know, I heard you talking before about the community engagement. We know that's very important here. We're gonna land use plan state. Uh, and then there's just a short presentation, high level, on the comp plan for lock rail node and the development code update. Talk about the timeline, and then any, uh, discussions around that from that standpoint there, so. The, the team here has been working over the last year to really provide some input on these zoning changes for the lock rail node. And we, you know, again, I can't, uh, stress enough how excellent job that the city of Dallas has done in having public meetings in an open house to discuss proposed changes. And over this whole process of looking at this lock rail node, we, you know, it took time to look at your past Eco Northwest, EOA and H and A data and, and received input from that. We compiled two technical memorandums required for that that had been shared in staff reports. And we, and again, we came before you, uh, last November, and, uh, planning commission approved the concept, and then city council approved that in twenty twenty-three. And then the city was able to get some grant funding, uh, from DLCD and move forward in what's really just the talking about the text and wording around the, uh, comprehensive plan and the development code there. And we continued on with the TAC committee. We prepared a comp plan audit and a development code audit related to the lock rail node. That's been shared in the, in the reports here with everyone. And again, through that whole process, um, I've been really making sure that we've had really great community participation, um. Starting back in March of twenty twenty-three, we had the first TAC meeting. Uh, April second of twenty twenty-three, we had the second TAC meeting. We had an open house with, you know, over eighty people attending in August. And then we came to planning commission just a week ago last year for approval of the concept plan, and then city council ratified that in, uh, November twenty-nine. So that's really been moving along, progressing nicely. Uh, then what happens is, you know, getting into the comprehensive plan code and the development code there, again, continuing on with the TAC meeting there and working with our TAC members. We had meetings in May, June, July. Again, in July, we met with, uh, the Downtown Association, the Economic Development folks. And then we had our third TAC meeting here, and now finally, we get to be in front of you folks here tonight, so again, just, you know, gathering any information, uh, we want to move this forward to the next step of its life here, so we're excited to be here tonight. But as you can see, the city did a fantastic job of having a, really casting a wide net of folks that would provide an input here from Brian Dalton from the Downtown Association, Don McRide with SME, Jennifer Ham with Call Real Estate, Fred Amater of City of Independence, and Sam Duffer, uh, with the Area Chamber. And you could go down the list, but really what you see here is a good representation. We like to see that when we're going through this process here, so really, you have the business community, you have government community. Sometimes these tax are weighed with, you know, a lot of governmental folks, and uh, this was really well represented, so we had a really good representation of business folks within there, there, so. Again, the Downtown Association met in August to provide feedback on this plan here. The Economic Development Team provided feedback here, so, and throughout this process, we've been keeping, uh, the LCD updated on this process here, as it's been moving forward here too, so. Uh, now we kind of get into what were the overview of the comprehensive plan that took place there. Uh, the chapters, chapter two, and one adjustments to reflect the increase of the commercial land. As you recall, you were running into a challenge in, uh, Dallas, but the shortage, only about thirty acres of commercial land left there. You know, and, and looking at your Eco Northwest report, and there's opportunity to look at that new concept, and you were able to increase that to ninety acres, so that's a, that's a great step in, uh, helping you move from being a bedroom community to having, you know, commercial services. that's a, that's a great step in helping you move from being a bedroom community to having, you know, commercial services as you move forward here too. Chapter three revisions were made to the city's housing policies. These changes, you know, specifically aimed to support the development of mixed use and high density in, in the lock rail node there. The updates address the city's need to diversify its housing, you know, including medium, high density residential options. And again, this alliance back with your twenty nineteen housing needs analysis, which highlights a growing demand for more affordable varied housing options in Dallas. And by encouraging mixed use developments, the city hopes to create a more vibrant neighborhoods that offer both housing employment opportunities in close proximities there. And chapter six was also updated to provide appropriate guidelines on extension of the infrastructure, particularly in the areas slated for the annexation. And I commend the city's done a fantastic job, you know, your city manager, Charlie and Chase, and Tom Gibson with the Public Works, you guys, you know, went forward and got the grant for the sewer line infrastructure and moving that into this area to help this area transition, which is fantastic. This is a critical change, you know, for urban services such as the water and sewer can extend in a timely manner to support the growth of lock rail node. These revisions focus on providing flexibility in the timing of infrastructure projects, allowing the development to pursue smoothly without delays. Additionally, the audit incorporated findings from the twenty twenty-one economic opportunity analysis, which highlights a commercial land deficit within the city. This analysis supports the decision to expand your commercial land within a lock rail node. Additionally, a mixed use district, this district is specifically to help facilitate developments that combine recreational, commercial employment uses in a single area. The recreation of the district supports the goal of creating a vibrant walkable neighborhood where people can live, work, access services with benign heavy cars. The mixed use district will help the city encourage efficient land use, promote sustainable growth and patterns within lock rail node. Maximum fifty dwelling units per an acre with a maximum dwelling height of eight stories or a hundred feet. Any residential development of mixed use district must be part of a mixed use district there. And then just further on, taking a little deeper dive into what that audit code was there, you can see that it's in the staff report on how that works for retail and commercial and housing in the mixed use district from that standpoint there. And then throughout this whole process, we've had a really important to track the, any feedbacks that we received from staff or, or the TAC members here and address those in response as we've been moving forward there. And then the most critical thing that we're really here tonight is to talk about the timeline. Again, this has been a, almost a two-year process here. The first process getting the concept of plan approved last year, and this is going through the text of the comp plan and the development code here. And that's really starting, having this informational, inform meeting with you folks here. Again, we've tried to provide this to you early in October. And any feedback will take tonight and update, but then we'll end up starting the process of coming forward with the, you know, doing the Papa, the thirty-five day notice and starting the draft, the type four application process there. That'll go through till the end of December. Heard you talking about some dates there. We'll have to coordinate with Chase and Ben on when your next dates your planning commission will be, but that process will start here for the lock rail node. And then as that goes forward from there, from a timeline, we'll be back here in January and February after the hearing notice, and then we will be looking at the city council hearing somewhere in February and March from a timing standpoint there. So it's an exciting project and greatly appreciate the opportunity here to finally get in front of everyone here tonight to help move this project along forward here for city of Dallas.
Well, thank you. Does anyone have any questions regarding the presentation? Go ahead, John.
What extent of, if any, does the first part of this meeting affect our participation in this going forward?
It won't. Legislative amendments are not, don't fall under the limited land use application process. So you will have the first hearing on any code and comprehensive, comprehensive plan amendments, just as you would have before.
Question I made this.
Who actually owns this land now?
The node, there are several property owners.
So, so.
How do they factor? What if they don't want to sell?
All we're doing is, if I understand it correctly, all we're doing is really setting out what zoning is going to be. Basically changing the zoning under the properties. If, it's only when somebody wants to sell the property or actually develop the property further that any of this applies.
None of the infrastructure build happens or anything else?
The infrastructure probably will. It just depends on the city budget and the way. There are a bunch of different ways. If I, hopefully I'm not taking the presenter's toy away from him, but, but as I understand it, basically it will depend on if a certain developer comes with a certain piece of property, then infrastructure to that area would be prioritized. But otherwise, it'll be as the city generally decides to move forward with its infrastructure.
We can't say there's an envisioned end to this, but by this date, this will all be built out.
No, it's totally up to the people who own the property. Have any more questions? And we've seen the, this is basically the, the map that we've seen with the various designations that we've seen before. So we don't really need to go over that, I'm assuming, or we'll get that particulars when we go to looking at the, at these code updates. Okay, so we're basically just looking at this. What your presentation is giving us is an idea of what's happened and where we're going from here and the, and the, the factors that have all been improved in, in place to do that. And forgive me, I can't remember what your name was, person on the Zoom.
Oh, thank you, yeah, yeah, thank you, Chair John Legarza. No, you're absolutely right, and you know, I think because, you know, Oregon's a land plan state to the question, you know, it's you know, a lot of times it's just when will the transaction place, you know, take place? It just depends on when an owner's willing to transact, you know, and I think that's you can see with the latest House bills, you know, there's some you know, issues around that, looking at, you know, folks that haven't transacted now, like how they can come in and out of those UGBs. So I think it is a problem that we continue to face, but but again, the zoning will be in place. You're doing a great thing of putting infrastructure in. You know, and you need to do that because you're trying to work inside this, you know, circle of a donut to be able to have your commercial and, and residential land, so it's a, it's a great step and appreciate the time to be here tonight.
Yeah, so, so basically the bottom line is we hired, the city hired a consultant to take into account all the things, all the, basically the bases that we've put together in the past. The housing needs analysis, the economic, economic opportunity study and all those things, and those are all incorporated in what we're going to do, or that was the goal with community input and everything else to create our guideline for the lock rail node. So that's where we're at at the moment. That's the whole, John, you'll appreciate this, that's the whole. That's where we actually spend money to get people's input, be consistent with what we've done in the past and create a framework for going forward into the future. So that's basically what this process is, and you can kind of see that in some ways we actually managed to do that. So, anyway, um, does anyone have any more comments or questions? Thank you very much, John. It was an excellent presentation.
When the property is, or if, if the, the person who has the property in this area, sells the property, does the property automatically become zoned, whatever the zoning is?
My understanding, it'll become zoned as, you know, it'll zone underneath the property whether it sells or not. It's just a question of if someone chooses to develop that property, that they'll be subject to what's going on here. So as long as nothing happens on it, nothing's changed. But the zoning that the property, if that changes under the property, it will govern what the abilities for that property owner do, whether they're the current owner or any future owners until that zoning or anything else gets changed. Any more questions? Out on that subject, or are we on, you want to talk about something other than the lock rail node? Then let's wait for the end, if you would. All right, well, if we don't have any more questions, I appreciate your time, John. And thank you. It seems like you're doing an excellent job, and we look forward to, for the progress in the future.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, planning commission members. Pleased to be here this evening. Have a great evening.
All right, you too.
Update.
All right. It is now time for commissioner comments, and John, you're on deck. Go ahead.
True that Salem Health has acquired fifty acres in Dallas. Just a curiosity question.
Yes, yeah, out of, of Godsey Road. Off, off of Godsey Road.
Oh, oh, okay.
That occurred like two years.
Oh, more than that, probably two or three years ago. Yeah, yeah.
Is it that big piece where the, where the toilet paper thing was gonna be? Oh, okay. Wow, they just haven't done anything with it yet. And it's probably secret if you knew anything, right? Yeah, okay, that's what I thought.
I don't, actually. Because it's just, it's just, yeah, it's bank, right?
So they just basically, you know, basically they've got money and they're using it to be ready for the future. Okay.
I, I can say that we have received no land use applications on the property since the Dallas project.
So even if Lane were ignorant, we don't have anything that we see on the horizon.
That's an ox.
All right. Yeah, as if that's gonna happen.
Anything's possible, you know.
All right, well, if there are no commissioner, more commissioner comments, anyone? Staff comments? Anyone?
Uh, thank you all for being able to attend on a non-regularly scheduled evening, so we, we appreciate your flexibility in, in this matter.
Glad we could, glad we could make it happen. And have a wonderful Thanksgiving. We're a week away from that, so on that note, I will adjourn at six forty-two.